Yep. Yep. Afternoon, Alex.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Gretkin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Chaner?
Here.
Can we stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. To the flag of the United States of America. The Republic from which it stands, one nation under God.
One nation under God.
Invisible liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're back the same way if the audience in watching on TV or on the computer wants to phone in, the number 712-224-4996. Consent agenda is items two through 12, consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council member. Phone in, please state the item you're speaking on and limit your comments to three minutes. We'll also need your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Two is a reading of the City Council minutes of May 11th, 2020. Three is a resolution approving the West 7th Street Corridor facade improvement program funding. I want to, for the record, I used to own one of these buildings. I no longer own any property on West 7th. And I am not participating in any of the rehab that they're proposing. I don't even know what their plan is. Number four is a resolution authorizing final payment to KP Construction for the 10th and Irene Streets paving repair project. Five are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution accepting a grant agreement from the FAA under the CARES Act for the airport.
Mayor, I've got a question on this one. Bob, is Mike available?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes, it is. Here he is.
Okay. Mike, is this a new grant different from the prior grant that we had?
We've never, Mike Colette, Assistant City Manager, we have not had this grant ever in the past. This is the first time for this based on the legislation approved by the Congress.
What do we have? Well, maybe I'm thinking of the same thing.
That was an application that came to council for approval to apply.
That was the application, okay. And this is just, this is for the operations?
Yes.
Not the capital, not any capital expenditures?
For the loss of revenue that we might experience because of the landing fees and that.
Anything after January 20th.
January 20th, and is there a job? Is there a job or employment level that has to be maintained?
We do. We have to maintain employment as of March 27th and will file on a quarterly basis to basically prove that number throughout. I'm not sure how far in the future that will go. This particular grant doesn't really have a cap as far as the length and it's 100% funded by the federal government.
It is 100%. I thought I read something to the effect of four years, Mike.
They, essentially it is four years, but they know that this is new for everybody. So if it's not, for some reason, used up in four years, they will work with us to extend that period out.
Four years is amazing.
Right, it is a long time. I can't imagine, we won't use it in the very near future.
Okay.
I would imagine as well.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
B is a resolution accepting a transit joint participation agreement with the IDOT for the two heavy duty buses. C is a resolution authorizing an application for the coronavirus emergency funding grant for construction of the vestibule waiting area to screen visitors to the police headquarters. D is a resolution authorizing the police department to accept a grant from the IDPS for overtime hours education and training. E is a resolution authorizing Sioux City Community Assistance to apply for and receive a Sioux Land Recovery Fund grant from the United Way. Six are actions relating to bonds. A is a resolution directing the sale of GO Bonds Series 2020A. B is a resolution directing sale of GO Bonds Series 2020B. Did you guys get the memo on the interest rate? It was extremely favorable for the city.
Yes. Very good.
Okay, seven are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving an amendment to number one to the contract with Bruning Eye Specialists and IEDA. B is a resolution approving change order number two to contract with Mark Albinicious for the Phase 3 Emergency Utility Pavement Repair Project. C is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Coglin Landscaping for the Sioux landscaping project at the airport. D is a resolution approving a contract with Knife River for the annual resurfacing project Phase 1.
I have a question on that one, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Is Gordon available? Bob?
Yes, Gordon is on his way up.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
Yes, Gordon's there.
Oh, thanks. Thanks, Julie. You can help me with that.
I can hear better.
Yeah, no kidding. I've had people yell at me all day, so that's my excuse. Gordon, so the annual resurfacing project, when does that start?
We hope to have that started here within, by June 1st at late start date.
And how long a project is that, Gordon?
The first phase will be Hamilton from 7th to Wesley, and that's 30 working days. They'll be working six days a week. And then the next couple of phases is either on Jackson or on 30th, and that's 80 working days.
Eighty, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So they are going to get done this year as opposed to last year when we had a bunch of carryover?
I can't guarantee that at this point, but I'm hoping so, yes.
Well, if you start in July, there's no excuse not to.
That's correct.
Okay.
E is a resolution approving a two-year extension with Piper, Jaffray and Company for financial advisory services. When will we ever bid it, Bob? You guys, once you get in here, you never...
We rebid this about four years ago. This is an extension with the changeover from finance directors and shortage of staff. We were requesting that this be extended once.
For two years?
Yes, for two years.
Yeah, once for two years, that's not once. So make a note of that, would you? F is a resolution proposing the amend the lease with the Missouri River Boat Club for 1085 Council Oak Drive. G is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to McConlon Associates for the Riverside Courts Resurfacing Project. I'm amazed that one of the largest people I think that does this work is Dennison, Iowa, and they didn't bid. So I wonder how or why our way of notifying contractors is not working. Because they do a lot of these tennis courts, Midwest track and turf, and they do a lot of football fields. And I'm amazed that they did not bid this unless it's too small for them. But could you have Matt ask them why they didn't bid?
No, but I can find out.
Yeah, I'd like to know why they didn't bid because...
Says Midwest turf.
Midwest track and turf out of Dennison. What's that?
Matt is here.
Yeah, why wouldn't they have bid that, Matt? I mean, that's what they do.
Yeah, Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director, we sent it out to everybody. All the, a lot of them are just busy this time of year.
Okay. All right. H is a resolution, you sent it to them for sure?
We sent it to all the local vendors that we have, that we had contacts for through purchasing. So I'm pretty sure we did.
Well, would you check that?
Was it, which company?
There are three companies that...
Midwest Track and Turf.
Okay, I'll check on that.
Out of Dennison.
I'll check on that.
H is a resolution awarding a consulting services agreement to Lox and Swartz for fee accounting services in the housing choice voucher program. I have no idea. Read that memo about three times, still don't understand what they're possibly doing for us for that small of an amount. But it sounds like it's something we have to have. I is a resolution approving a contract with KP Construction for the Emergency Utility Pavement Repair Project Phase 5. A are actions relating...
I have a question on Mayor on I, or just maybe a comment, but Gordon, are you still there?
Yes.
This is an emergency repair project, so if you've noticed in the write-up that Gordon submitted, I think the other low bid was six weeks out before they could even get to the job. Isn't that correct?
Right.
Yes, that's correct.
So I just want you all to know, I mean, so we're paying somewhat of a premium to have the emergency repair made now rather than six weeks from now.
Well, that's because you high-end guys have to have Starbucks.
And Gordon, what is their start date on this?
Uh, it was a couple of weeks ago and they're actually going to be done tomorrow.
It's paved, Julie.
Okay, great. So it's really their completion date. That's awesome. Yeah, I did notice that we were paying a little more because of that.
It's the one right by Starbucks. When you get your morning latte, you could have seen them working out there.
Yeah.
I can't go that way. I did drive on that glass-like surface on Stone Park Boulevard, though.
Yeah. A are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution amending the position classification manual by approving an updated job description for the technical clerk position. B is a resolution amending this community development payroll complement by adding two project coordinator positions and deleting one administrative secretary. C is a resolution approving a manual and salary schedule for police supervisory employees. D is a resolution approving a manual and salary schedule for fire supervisor employees. Nine are total payments issued for April 2020. Ten are applications for beer, I'm sorry, for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits. See the list, do you have any questions? Eleven's applications for beer and liquor license, see the list, come forward if you have any questions. And 12 is receipt a minute, see the list, come forward if you have any questions. Are anyone to be heard on that? Call the roll, please.
Waters?
Alex?
Sorry, I, sorry.
Gretkin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Chaner?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi. Hearings. Thirteen is a hearing and a resolution approving plans and specs for the taxiway A reconstruction project at the airport. I'll move that.
Second.
The hearing is now open. Would anyone like to be heard for or against the resolution? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Call the roll, please.
Gretkin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Chaner?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Fourteen's a hearing and resolution amending the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. I'll move that.
Second.
The hearing is now open. Would anyone like to be heard to speak for or against an item? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Call the roll, please.
Moore?
Hi.
Chaner?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Gretkin?
Hi.
Fifteen's an ordinance repealing Title 13 sewers in the Mississippi Code and acting a new title of the same name. I'll move first reading.
Second.
I have a question. We always, you're looking for what kind of a rate increase? Two and a half, I think I read, or something like that. What is it?
Mayor and Council members, utilities director, we can kind of walk through those. It depends upon the user class as to which...
Right, I know, there's like all kinds.
And I can get a presentation up here for you. Bear with me just a minute.
This is the PowerPoint that was sent out to us?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Does everybody have that? Yep.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Before we get into the PowerPoint, just a couple of things, Mayor and Council, and then I'll ask Teresa to come up and talk about the first part of the presentation. But what we're asking you to do tonight is to consider really an overhaul to Title 13, the sewer part of our ordinance. And this is something that's been worked on for probably two or two and a half years at this point. We've had the help of legal many times. We've had input from a variety of industrial users, sister cities, stakeholders. And we're at this point where we're ready to ask you to consider adopting this. This does become the basis for our industrial pretreatment program and for our sister city agreements, and it establishes user charges. It does include recommended rate adjustments, which Teresa and I will summarize for you in just a minute. The new ordinance is based upon the EPA model and it adopts allowed industrial loadings, which allocates, which can be allocated as limits in industrial user permits if needed. This has been vetted many times over by stakeholders and we've incorporated those comments in what we've done here. Councilman Gretkin has been involved.
Mark, this has also been reviewed by State IDNR and EPA as well, right?
Yes. Yep, Councilman Gretkin and Capron have been involved over the past couple of years as well. And DNR continues to vet this and they're just waiting on our actions at this point. We do intend to have an additional stakeholders meeting on June 1st, which we assume would be when you would be doing the second reading on this ordinance. And we've already scheduled that with the stakeholders, industrial users and sister cities. And we intend to go through it one more time with them, informing them what the changes are, answering any questions that they have, and making sure that they're completely up to speed. It does enable the city to better address capacity limitations. It allows us to maximize and optimize allocations to not exceed assigned capacities while being as impartial as possible and considering all current stakeholders. It does include fats, oils and grease limits for industrial users while maintaining them for the food service establishments. The new code adopts a TKN, Total Kaldol Nitrogen Rate, along with allowable industrial load mentioned earlier. TKN is one of the most problematic pollutants that we have in our wastewater. And in the last four months, we've been within 5% of our allowable load for TKN. So it is a very important parameter for us to be considering. The proposed TKN rate will allow the city to recover some of the cost of treating waste with high levels of TKN. And we'd like you to note that the typical domestic strength for TKN is in the 30 milligram per liter range. What we have proposed in this ordinance is to not start any type of rates or enforcement action until we reach the 100 milligram per liter. So it's literally three times. We want to kind of phase this in and be easy on the industries as we possibly can. And this has also been discussed with the most impacted industrial users and simulated bills have been provided. We will update this and provide it once again to these users if they desire. Ideally, the revenue from the surcharge would go towards funding a collaborative solution for TKN treatment. The TKN rate would be phased in over three years when it is reached and the level recommended by the cost of service study as our true cost of service. We also are well underway with grant-funded pilot studies that may reduce nitrogen. And we'll do a second study which should give us needed information on methods to reduce nitrogen and phosphorus for the near future. Both may be mandated as early as our next NPDS permit, which we're waiting to receive now. It gives us flexibility in the sense that we are required to meet federal requirements, but enables us to optimize our industrial pretreatment program so our limited resources are best utilized, protect the publicly owned treatment works while allowing as much flexibility as possible to all stakeholders. One example of this is five-year permit cycles, and that used to be a three-year cycle. So it actually gives more flexibility, more time for the city and for industries than we've had in the past. And there are many other examples I won't take the time to go through now. It improves our enforcement response plan and provides more clarity to stakeholders. The rates that we're proposing are heavily influenced by the cost of service study as well as a fund analysis to maintain our debt coverage ratios and compliance with SRF requirements. So that's kind of a summary of what we're asking you to look at tonight. And it is very significant, so I wanted to take a little bit more time than normal. It's probably one of the larger things that we've done in the last several years for the wastewater treatment system. So with that, I'll turn it over to Teresa to kind of walk through.
Mark, before you do that, could I just, for purposes of getting Julie caught up? Julie, Mark mentioned that cost of service study that was done, and the council approved that with a consulting service agreement with HDR in November of 2018. And then the council approved that cost of service study in June of 2019. So like Mark had said, a lot of input went into this. And one of the really strong bases that we're relying on is this cost of service study. So not like it's just a sudden deal that's come up or it's an overnight deal. It's been one that's been studied for a couple of years, so I just...
Yeah, it's May of 18, I believe. Is that right, back in May? I mean, back in 2018?
It may have been even sooner than that, but yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And my understanding, Mark, just to piggyback off of that comment with Dan, too. Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was a lot of the other industries and I think even the sister cities were urging for that study as well to have a better understanding of what those accurate costs would be, right?
That's correct.
They were urging that as well. It was not just our wanting of the study.
Right, yes, they had requested it, and so they were active participants in selection of HDR as well as the scope of the proposal and trying to determine if it met our scope once we received those proposals.
And Mark, you also mentioned you'll be meeting with the sister city industries on June 1?
Yes, sir.
Will you be having, I mean, you'll have ongoing, I would think, conversations with them about all of this, wouldn't you, as you go forward?
Yes, sir. Each one's a little bit different, but certainly various levels of staff are engaged with the industries. I'm engaged quite a bit with the sister cities when they reach out. So I think that we're covering those bases, but we'd be welcome to, we would welcome your input as to how much more we might do in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor and Council, Teresa Fitch, Interim Finance Director. I'm going to go over the first portion of the sewer rates, kind of the overall fund analysis. And Mark, we'll talk more in detail about the actual rates to each industry. Slide here, you'll see, this just is a recap of all the capital projects. It's really just an overall, overall, you'll see a lot of annual types of sewer projects as well as other improvements to the sewer. You'll see the total cost in that 21 year, which is this current year, is 17 million. In '22, it's 11 million, and in '23, another 7 million. Those are the years that we're looking at here. Okay, I'm going to move to the next slide, the third slide, for those of you at home following along. This here is just an overall summary of the actual fund analysis. As you can see, it looks like without an increase, soon in '24, our fund will go negative. We will no longer have the required fund balance that our fund policy requires. With this increase, we will gradually get to our 20% fund balance requirement. Our actual policy says between 12 and 20%. Also, without this increase, which isn't shown here, but we would not have enough coverage for our debt ratio. So in '21, our debt ratio would be 113%. '22 would be 114%, and then '23 would be 110%. It is required to be at 110% for SRF funding. So we really do need an increase to ensure that we can get our funding for the SRF loans. This fund analysis, I'm going to move to the next slide here. This will just summarize some of the assumptions within the fund analysis. The renewable fuel revenue, this here lays out and is, you know, done by Mark's group. And a lot of work is put into determining what we anticipate the revenues to be. That's the revenue layout for the actual renewable fuel revenue. In addition to that, there is, within the fund analysis, we've estimated a collection of a outstanding receivable of $1.55 million. So that is also included in this sewer fund analysis.
Teresa?
Yes?
Could I ask you a question on that, please?
Sure.
The slide I'm looking at says if Moore has recovered, this could reduce the rate increase needed in future fiscal years?
Correct.
How do we track that? So, in other words, how would I know five years from now that we've recovered, or Moore was recovered than we anticipated in 2020, and so we could start to reduce our rate increases? What triggers that? Who oversees that?
Right now, I know Moak and Legolo actively monitoring this receivable. It is one large receivable. So I do think that they are tracking it and monitoring it closely. And we would have a, I mean, I don't know a timeline. Do you know, Mark, on a timeline? Mark, do you know, Nicole, do you have a timeline of any?
This is a potential litigation item, so that's kind of...
Okay. Okay. So at this point, we don't have a timeline.
Okay. But that'd be a recovery that would all be made aware of anyway, so...
Yes.
But I just hope, I hope I connect the dots to say, oh, gosh, we've recovered this, now we can look at our rates again.
Right, no, the council will be notified of the recovery and will be, I believe, fully involved in that process.
Okay, thanks.
So Teresa, this is...
Yes.
Julie, I just wanted to ask on that point, too, the 3.1 million outstanding on that slide, that's the goal that if we recover the entire 3.5, then we can maybe level off increases?
Yes, if we recover the full 3.1, yes. But right now, we are just anticipating 50%, so just to be conservative. This, the fund analysis only includes 50% of that receivable.
Okay, understood.
I'm moving to the next slide. We'll discuss the residential user impact. And there'll be three slides here. Each one of them will discuss a different type of user. Each one of them, again, see the 4.5% increase in '21, '22 and '23, all residential. The first user you see here is a low-volume person typically, or peoples, one to two people in a household. They would consume 50 to 100 gallons per day, per person. Overall, of the three years, they would see an increase of a total of $2.278 over the three years of their monthly increase. So at the end of the three years, they would have a $2.78 increase in their monthly bill. The second user, which is on to the next slide, kind of a typical user, which would be two to four people in a household. Again, 50 to 100 gallons usage per person. The monthly increase in '21 would be $1.65, '22, $1.72, and '23, $1.80. So in overall, in the three years, they'd see in a monthly increase $5.17 at the end of that three-year period per month. The next family you'll look at is a large family, four to eight people in the household, same usage of gallons of water. They would see an overall, over the three years, $9.95 of increase at the end of the three-year period. The next slide...
Seems very reasonable.
The next slide here will just give you a rate comparison compared to other cities in Iowa. Right now, we are fifth for rates. With this increase, you'll see where we have the current and the new. We will still remain fifth ranked in the state. You know, we're not far off from the other cities here. And now I will turn this over to Mark, and he'll talk to you more about the industrial users.
Thank you, Teresa.
Mayor and Council, Mark Sims, Utilities Director, back up again. And still on those last two slides, just to kind of mention, you know, what does it really cost a user to put a gallon of waste or wastewater down the drain? And believe it or not, it amounts to six tenths of one cent is what they would be doing if these rates go into place. And in the year, the fiscal year, third fiscal year, it would go up to seven tenths of one cent. Gives you an idea what it costs to be able to treat one gallon, just to really bring it... bring it down to, you know, to that level.
That's all well and good, but a person of five or six people, they're going to spend 100 and some dollars more a year.
They sure are, yep.
And not everybody gets those kind of raises in town.
Right. So Teresa mentioned the rate comparison and what we have there, if you go back to that slide, it would have been slide number seven. It had the, the bar graph there. It has the current as well as the new rate, and we obviously don't know yet what the new rates are for these other communities. So we assume that we're going to kind of stay on pace here with these rates in terms of what our rates are, you know, related to others in the state. So roughly continuing to be in fifth place. Certainly, there are many other considerations that we don't want to take time here to go through, but you could evaluate every rate that we have against theirs. In some cases, we're lower, some cases we're higher, depending on whether it's residential or industrial or whatever the case might be. If we jump ahead to slide number eight, you'll see we're talking about industrial users now. And again, we charge industrial users based upon several factors. The only one that I took time to focus on in this presentation was their flow. And you can see that we're requesting a 7.5% increase each of the three fiscal years. And you can kind of see the impact here. We have roughly 33 industrial users. Probably 20 of those or so are, are in Sioux City. And you can see what the flow charge is per thousand gallons. And then I, just for the sake of giving you something to, to compare this to, I said that a small user might use 60,000 gallons per month. And that would certainly, that would be the equivalent of about 2,000 gallons per day. So you can see what the impact there is. It would be a monthly increase on that flow volume of 12, 24 the first year and so forth. So that would be a small user. A medium user, and again, these are not related to any specific industry, they're just for comparison purposes. But a medium user was, that was using about a half a million gallons per month. You can see that their monthly increase in fiscal year '21 with the seven and a half percent would be $102, and then it goes to 109.50 and 117.50 over the next two fiscal years. So that's.
Mark, I have a question.
Yes.
Could I, can we get just a, a general idea of what kind of a business or industrial business would be, qualify as a small user, just for an example?
I would say the majority of ours are probably in the small to medium category. I'll show you an example on the next slide of a large user and the impact there, but.
What would the type of business be?
Well, all these are food industries, Julie, so.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're all over the board.
Okay, gotcha.
And if you have other questions, feel free to call me. I can give you specific examples.
I will, thank you.
And the next slide, which would be slide number 10, you can see where it says large user on the bottom right-hand side. This is using 50, 50 million gallons per month, or the equivalent of about 1.67 million gallons per day. We have one user in this category in Sioux City. We have other users outside of Sioux City that are a little bit less than this, but somewhat rival this number. And you can see the impact here, the seven and a half percent per year increase fiscal year '21, it'd be a little over $10,000 a month increase, and goes up to 11, 750 in that third fiscal year.
But that's 30 some thousand a month at the end of the rate increase. So you're talking 360,000, right?
Yes. And, and keep in mind, other, other parameters that are not going to be shown on these slides, BOD, suspended solids, those types of things, those also have changes in their rates. Some of them are influenced by the cost of service, but the cost of service was not completely followed in that regard. So this is a, probably a confusing slide for you. The things in yellow are the things, obviously, I thought you might want to focus on. TSS is total suspended solids. That's the solid part of the waste. And you can see that, and what I've left off here is what we call domestic-level waste. It's important to note that industries pay nothing for domestic-level waste other than for their flow. There, there's zero charge to them for that. So once they reach a concentration in, for example, with TSS of 301, then they go into this tier one category, and you can see what the rate is there each year. If they go above 1,200, for example, for TSS, then the rate essentially doubles. And I'm sure that when this was adopted years ago, the, the idea was to try and limit how many industries might have significant issues and send us, you know, large amounts of waste that were difficult to handle. And so it was, it was kind of designed that way, that that tier two was, was a pretty significant increase, in fact, a doubling. You can see the very bottom there, TKN, that's that new charge. And this is something that was vetted quite a bit and talked about quite a bit at the, with HDR and with the cost of service study. I can tell you, for comparison purposes, I looked up the city of Ames, and they charge about 75% more than this for TKN. They're at point, I have to look that, I think it's, they're at $1.01, I think, is what it is, depending on what year you're looking at. So you can see what we're trying to do here is phase this in to have a little bit less impact. So the first year, it would be a third of what HDR had recommended that it needs to be in order to cover the cost of treating TKN. And TKN, again, is our most problematic constituent, I guess, in the waste, most difficult to treat.
What industries, what industries are high in TKN?
There are probably six or seven, Mayor. Seaboard certainly would be one.
Right.
If I remember right, Mobern.
My point is that Ames could be whatever they want to because they don't have any industry like that to speak of.
Right.
They can, you're comparing apples and oranges.
It was just a one example I looked up before I got up here, but I could certainly.
But I mean, they don't have.
Try and provide more.
They're, they're, they just don't have industrial users in that town to speak of.
And then outside domestic, or what you might think of as sister cities, is the next slide, and that is slide number 12, I believe. And you can see, what I used there was an average of 30 million gallons per month, which is kind of in the middle of all of the sister cities. And can see what the impact on those are. And I, I kind of refer you back to when we were talking with HDR about the cost of service study. They end up, they identified that sister cities were being severely undercharged. And initially, there was a recommendation to make that up all in one year, and obviously we didn't do that. So this is kind of phasing that in. I have shared these rates. In fact, very similar scenarios is what you see here with the sister cities. And that, I believe, I've gotten two comments back, and there were no comments really, it was just an acknowledgement that, thank you for sending this, and we're aware of it. So I have had no feedback, I guess, positive or negative from the sister cities, and they are aware. And again, we'll have them on a call on June 1, and we'll be able to show these things to them on the screen. And then there are other fees that may not be so significant to talk about, so I just lumped them all into one slide here. But there are fees for taking samples. Each industry has a different type of sampling regimen. There are fees associated with the testing of that waste. Some require more testing than others. We have a rate that's been in place for some time for direct injection, which basically would be waste that's injected directly into our digestors, where we can receive the most benefit from the gas. There is some waste that's more beneficial than others, obviously. You can see that it's going up at 2.25 if you approve this. And then septic haulers has been, I thought, was notoriously low for quite some time, but the cost of service actually turned out that we're not, not terribly far off in what we've been charging septic haulers as far as what it costs to treat their waste. There are some other incidental charges I didn't think that we'd want to spend the time on today, but they are in the, in the code, and I'm happy to share any of those with you at any of the readings if you'd like. And with that, that, I think that concludes the slide presentation.
Questions, Council?
Let me, let me just clarify something, Mark. In your write-up, you had the enterprise fund balance policy, what it states with the 20%. Is that, am I understanding, that's what's driving some of this increase?
There's two things, Councilman Moore, the, that policy, which Teresa said is 12 to 20%. So there's some flexibility there, as well as the SRF requirement for 110% of our, you know, covering our debt. We can't maintain that without the increase, so it would be difficult to continue many of the CIP projects that are going on short of the increase.
And the residential increases, and how, how many increases have we had?
My notes showed that we had three, excuse me, two in the last eight years. I think this would be the third, potentially in the ninth year. And I, one thing I didn't focus on here, I assume you might get questions from the really small users, the one-person households. The impact on them is about 51 cents a month, if they're a really low-volume user in the sense that they don't use more than that 200 cubic feet.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
I guess, I would just ask Mark or Teresa, I mean, I think that the calculations, the debt capacity, all of those things can get convoluted and rather complicated, especially to just a constituent asking. I would just be curious, Mark, you know, if, if posed to you, you got stopped in a grocery store and someone is asking you, which I know does not happen nearly as often in today's climate, but if someone stopped you and just asked, what's the 30-second response of why we have to do this? Why in the world are we having to increase the rate?
Well, Alex, there's probably three things. First of all, as we know, that just the general costs go up from year to year, so there's going to be some need for additional revenue at some point. What the cost of service identified was that we were not charging for TKN, which is our most expensive component. And so HDR attempted to pull those costs out of some of the other rates, like BOD and suspended solids, and then make up for those with those that are contributing TKN. So the intent here of the cost of service certainly was to try and identify costs and then make sure that the customer classes that were generating those costs were the ones that were going to pay for them.
Let's be perfectly honest, the reason you've got TKN is because it's a state mandate. It got mandated because we're over nitrogen, our fields in Iowa, but rather than have the farmers have to do anything like shelter belts and those sort of things, the cities have to reduce. That's what it's all about. We put too much fertilizer on our yards in this city. We put too much fertilizer in the fields around our city. And if you know anything about it, this started about 10 years ago, it's the state's way of getting the nitrogen levels down in the state and having somebody besides the ag community pay for it. I'm not afraid to say that. If the farmers don't like it, too bad, it's reality. And you know it, and I know it.
And, and Mayor.
State mandates on nitrogen is why you're doing this.
And Mayor, phosphorus is another one that's on the horizon.
Exactly.
Which is a, you know, a component of the fertilizer.
We would have had to do this long before now if we wouldn't have put all that money in the sewer plant. And when we did that, the permit is a 10-year permit.
Five-year permit.
Used to be 10. When we started, I know it was, because I remember eight years ago going to a League of Cities, and they told me we were okay for a while because we'd done all that work, talking to one of the engineers that did a symposium. Anyway, long story short, guys, part of this is, is a result of state mandates that you don't have any control over. So you got to pay for it.
And we have significant food industries that generate a lot of nitrogen, it's just part of their process. And so we probably get hit harder than some other communities that don't have those types of industries.
So, any other questions? Now that I'm on my soapbox, let's keep rolling here. Call the roll.
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Breckin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
16, do we do 16 until we do the third reading?
Put it anytime, I think, Mayor.
Okay, 16 is a resolution approving an enforcement response plan for pre-treatment program at the wastewater treatment plant. And a rescinding resolution 2017-0142, I'll move it.
Second. So we're voting on this one, number, on 16?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, hey, Mark, just generally speaking, and you seldom, I hope you seldom hear this from me, but just looking through the enforcement response plan, that, that is really a complicated, lengthy ordinance. Is there any way we can make that a little bit more simplified?
Have somebody besides a lawyer write it, but probably not.
Actually, we had a consultant write it, which probably didn't.
I'm sure you have an attorney on staff, but anyway.
Well, I mean, so enforcement is going to be from you, Mark?
Yes, from Utilities Department.
Okay. I mean, and, and I'm a little bit out of my area for sure of what I study, but when I was just reading through it, I just thought, wow, I mean, this is a.
They do it now, Dan.
What?
They do it now. They already do this, it's just cleaning up the ordinance.
Right.
What they're doing, this is what they've put in writing. It may be okay, I mean, Mark, if you understand it and your department understands it.
Yes, sir.
But I'd have to read it again and again, just, you know, just to see what the enforcement is, because you're talking, if I read this correctly, I mean, you could be talking, what, $1,000 a day penalties?
That's the maximum per violation. But that's, that's existed for quite some time, Dan. The, the penalty amounts really haven't changed. And this is something that EPA, I think, wanted to see us shore up a little bit. They didn't feel like our existing enforcement response plan, which you approved, I don't know, three or four years ago.
2017.
Was quite enough. When they would come and do the audits, they said, you know, you're missing this or you're missing that in terms of being able to enforce your, your Title 13.
Okay, I, I didn't know we were a little bit deficient then, because, I mean, that was a consultant that worked on that back then, wasn't it? Or did we do that internally?
That was, Councilman Moore, this is Nicole, that was internally done, I believe, several years ago.
That was probably.
Oh, okay.
I think it was done internally.
You might have made that clear in the write-up, and I might have missed it. I was hung up on just reading through all of those pages again, so that answers my question. Thanks, Mark.
Dan, I think that it gives us the, it gives us the clarity we need that we were kind of missing, so I'm very comfortable with it. I know it's lengthy and probably the non-waste.
I know it's lengthy and probably the non-wastewater reader, it is complicated, but it does help us.
Well, if it helps with enforcement, too, that's important.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Let a motion in.
Yes, we do.
Call the roll.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Julie?
Julie?
We'll move on.
Hi, hello, I'm talking, can you hear me?
Now we can hear you. We couldn't hear you just a minute ago.
I think my phone was cutting out, I kept saying, aye, aye.
Aye, 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 okay.
Aye, 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 aye.
I can see you now, yeah, but a minute ago, you were completely silent.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
All right, 17 is a resolution approving a development agreement with Plaza Bowl at 3091 Hamilton Boulevard, I'll move that.
Second.
Contrary to what some people think, we're not putting $750,000 in this, it's a brownfield fund that--
No.
--we've had around that we have to spend on different projects like this, and so it's to help that building modernize and bring it up to date, so it's not what has been reported in the news media.
Call the roll, please.
And it's to help the abatement of the, except this is our--
Exactly, exactly, the needs be done.
Yeah.
And if I could make a humble request, speaking of updating that facility, if we're going to be putting these funds towards and stuff, if we could make it more accessible, I would really appreciate that, because there's no way to get down to the lanes, to whether anyone with a mobility impairment would be able to bowl themselves, or even just kind of hang out with their friends that are bowling there. It's not accessible at this time.
I'm guessing they're going to do enough work that they'll have--
That's a good point.
Have to bring it up to standards, Alex, would be my guess, like every other place.
I would say so. And a point that I would like to make on the Plaza Bowl is that they have to have at least 16 lanes to have any kind of a tournament there--
Right.
--in town, and that's the only bowling alley other than Lamar's in our vicinity that has 16 lanes or more.
It sounds like it's going to be an extensive project, because if I read it correctly, it doesn't get completed till the end of 20--
Right.
Twenty--
Two.
They promised it'll be done by 2021--
Twenty-one, I mean, yeah.
--but they think most of the work will be finished by 2020, I think it said.
2021 is when it's done.
Yeah.
Okay, call the roll.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
18 is a resolution approving a contract to WA Klinger for the Chris Larson Park Riverfront Development Project. Somebody want to move that?
I'll move it.
Second. Oops, I'm sorry.
Questions? Anybody got any questions? Because Matt's here if you do. Okay, call the roll.
Is that Mayor, is anybody calling in?
No.
Okay.
Okay, call--
Matt answered all my questions earlier today.
Okay.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
I'm going to abstain and not, because I have a conflict of interest, but I'm not, I don't want to practice law, but I have concerns that this is an unbalanced bid. And I'm not, I don't want to, so rather than vote no, I don't want to question the legal department's opinion, but I just have reservations about it, so is that proper to abstain under that scenario?
It will count as a no vote on an abstention--
I understand that.
--without a conflict of interest, yes.
An abstention always is a no vote.
Would you like additional explanation from engineering regarding the analysis on the unbalanced bid question?
No, they put it out there, I don't agree with it. Because if you have an item that you have a high dollar amount compared to the other bidders, that bidder has the potential to profit from a quantity change of any dramatic-- and, I mean, that's what an unbalanced bid is, you try to outguess the engineer of where you're going to have the overage. And I hope your engineering firm did a great job, because if that particular item comes in way under, you guys are going to have a lot of egg on your face, I hate to tell you that. So, anyway, it passes, does everybody vote, or go ahead?
Waters?
Aye.
Okay. 19 is a resolution approving Amendment Number 7 to the Consulting Services Agreement with Smith Group for the Chris Larson Park Riverfront Development Project.
Somebody, again, will have to make a motion, because I'm still not convinced, I'll just tell you why I don't want to make the motion, because I'm not going to vote for this today. I'm not convinced of the great feature that's going to draw people off the interstate. I still haven't seen it, and we're just, by doing this, we're moving ahead with that. We're going to accept what they say is the agreement, and you can tell me not, Matt, but I've been here too long. Once we do these agreements--
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. The scope of the design for Phase 2 actually does not even include the iconic feature. Amendment Number 8 was also, which is also being discussed today, is for the discussion of the concept for a bridge, which could be the iconic feature, so that's a separate vote.
So this still is including what they proposed down there on the east end, or south end, depending on--
There's no river lights, there's no Ferris wheel included with this design.
I know, but they're going to include some sort of mist on you, you know, some wall or something.
We have the fountain, interactive fountain, but we do not have the lights that go with it that were proposed at one time.
So they're going to want money for that besides?
Depending on what we move forward with, otherwise, we have the bridge concept to entertain as the next item, if that ends up being the iconic feature for the park. Because there's so much uncertainty under what the iconic feature should be, last time we had the discussion, there was some support for the bridge, so we brought that forward for today's meeting.
And this is just for design, or is it for construction and everything?
Inspection, too, is, design and inspection.
Because it's plenty of money--
Yes.
--for that phase, it's a lot of money, so, especially when they've spent, we've given them so much conceptual money, we're basically paying for that again now, is what it amounts to.
Paying for the difference, yeah.
Paying for the difference, paying a lot of money for that phase. Did somebody make a motion?
No.
Somebody make a motion, please?
I moved it.
Is there a second?
And I seconded it, Waters.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Moore?
Aye.
Janer?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
20 is a resolution approving Amendment Number 8 to the Consulting Services Agreement with Smith Group for the pedestrian bridge concept for the Chris Larson Park Riverfront Development Project. Somebody want to move it?
I'll move that one.
Second.
And is there any funding out there? Have we found any, like a Tiger grant?
As a part of their design, as a part of this phase, they are going to research the funding sources for this particular concept.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I make a comment before you vote?
Yep.
I'm going to vote no, and I'll tell you why. Looking at the funding for this development project, Phase 1 seems to be good, not a problem. Phase 2 is not yet fully funded, and if we put in a pedestrian walkway, nobody knows right now, but I think we're, the cost, but I do think we're talking multi-millions in order to accomplish that, and I just have a very challenging time trying to convince myself that we should spend $59,000 now when we don't have enough money to fully fund Phase 2, and we sure don't have any money to fully fund a potentially $10 million pedestrian walkway. So I am going to vote no, and I hate to see the money spent without having the funding to go along with whatever the feasibility study may tell us.
Well, Pete, that's one of the problems I had with 19, is I said from the very beginning, we don't have enough parking there, and these consultants basically said, you don't know what you're talking about. Now, as part of that Number 7, you're looking at more parking across the interstate. And we were told we didn't need more parking, but now all of a sudden, we don't have enough parking. So I think you're going to find you got more--
Yeah, I understand exactly what you're saying, Mayor. You're talking about Amendment Number 7?
Yes.
Number 19?
Yes.
Yep.
I questioned that parking from the very beginning when they put out those conceptual plans, and they basically said there's plenty of parking for what you need to do there. If there was plenty of parking, why is, as part of that, are we looking at more parking?
Aye.
Makes no sense, but anyway--
I don't know how we can be fiscally responsible and approve projects, or even in this case, a study, a consultant's study, when we know right now we don't have enough money to accomplish that. That could be a five-to-10-year commitment to get that far. It just doesn't make any sense until we know we have funding available.
Well-- Pete, I would tell you, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Julie, I apologize.
Fine.
I would just hop in and just say that I have heard there's a great deal of momentum for the pedestrian bridge, and before you can even look into, because I agree with the mayor, whether it's you look into a build grant formerly Tiger, or you look at different funding sources, grant opportunities at federal, the state level, et cetera, you have to know what it's going to cost and what that concept could look like. And so if we don't have any plans or specs, if no one's done any of that calculation, then we're really just shooting in the dark, and if we say, because I agree, there are some iconic features that I've been a fan of and others that I haven't, but this one at least has the potential where you can utilize federal dollars as well as Nebraska state dollars and Iowa state dollars, because if we're connecting to the South Sioux City recreational area where you have soccer field, tennis complex, trails, everything like that, it's a natural fit going from one recreation center to another, that I think that there would be a lot more funds that would open up that would cover that cost that you're concerned about. Whereas if we do an iconic feature, one that's already been talked about, or other options, maybe, then you're just looking at some federal dollars, Iowa dollars specifically, no collaboration between two states and two communities, and maybe you can help offset some of that cost. I think there was enough of an appetite for the possibility of a pedestrian bridge that would really warrant the legwork of just saying, let's at least know what we're dealing with. What would it cost? What could it look like? And where could we get that money available, which is also in this contract?
Alex, I understand what you're saying, and maybe it would be easier to, for me to vote for it if I knew that there was a funding source that was available, or the opportunities existed. However, I don't remember a, what I would call a serious conversation about adding this to the development project, the riverfront development project. I know one of the last meetings before we began staying at home, I know Julie mentioned it, I'm pretty sure you expressed some excitement about it, I don't remember Council having a discussion about moving forward with this until I saw this item on the agenda. And again, if I was aware that the state of Nebraska, that the city of South Sioux was going to participate, that the federal government had funding available, but I've seen nothing along that line. And a lot of what we're doing to finish Phase 2 is private contributions, and I'm a little not, you obviously know more than I do, and I haven't heard a lot about, you know, the local community being excited about the pedestrian bridge as a possibility. But if we have to get out and start soliciting, or trying to come up with private contributions, I think it's going to be a hard sale. And I wish I had some of that other information available you just talked about.
Well, this is Dan, I mean, somewhat to Pete's point, and I'd like to get Matt's input on Mr. Greckin's input that he had, as well as Alex's, but maybe we haven't really have done the community-type study to know what that iconic feature is. A lot of really good ideas have been put on the table, but they, you know, the Ferris wheel was probably the most, had the most comments of any of them. There were other ones with the lighting, the waterfall, that kind of thing. The mayor goes back pretty much consistently, saying who's going to, what iconic feature is going to pull people off the interstate to stop in Sioux City, spend some money, and spend some time there. And so maybe we don't have that, and I'd like to get Matt's input on this, but, Matt, maybe we don't have that yet as a committee, a riverfront development committee, of what that really is going to be, and do we really have the community backing, or notwithstanding what it's going to cost? I mean, you can't, if you eliminate it, to Alex's point, if you eliminate it just because of the cost, you're eliminating any avenues that you might have for grants that could be available, and maybe it is a five-to-10-year project, but nonetheless, it's still a project that we could all get behind as a community.
Dan, this is Matt, I'll address that. One of the issues with this particular item, the concept, what the iconic feature is going to be, is the park board split, the riverfront steering committee's split, the council's split. When we did our public input, we had a lot of support for the Ferris wheel, but that was at the beginning stages, and there's differing opinions, so this is a difficult one to try to figure out. And we don't have to decide right now, but wanted to bring it up today since we're voting on everything else.
Well, I was going to ask you, Matt, if this is an item that could be deferred or tabled or even pulled until we have a steering committee meeting to just maybe get some direction of how do you collect this community input that we need?
And that's why we separated this out from the rest of the Phase 2 design, so this decision could be made independently. So we can definitely do that.
And you support that from all that you've seen with the steering committee? And, because we've got a great steering committee, folks, we really do, notwithstanding, you know, exclude me from the company on that, but we've got a good steering committee, and they work hard at it. So you--
Well, that would be, sorry.
Well, you could support that, Matt.
I could support delaying that decision until the riverfront steering committees had more time to discuss the item.
Because that would be my concern or question, is, gosh, I feel like we've solicited a lot of public opinion, and I know the riverfront steering committee has been working on this for four years. For four years, the riverfront steering committee has been meeting on this and discussing features. To my knowledge, no, and I know quite a few of those people on that committee, and, I mean, obviously, Dan, you and I have had conversations, I would say the only reason the pedestrian bridge ever wasn't no, or like, well, I don't think we can, was because we thought the cost would be too great. And so everyone loved that idea and wanted that, and I think there was a lot of public support, but then we just thought the cost. What I like about this is, I just want to know what that number is. If it's $10 million, tell me it's $10 million, and let's go forward, and if that's what people want, let's do it. Let's see where those funds are available, because I've talked with delegation here in Iowa, they believe there are grants available. I know that South Sioux City gets a great deal of grants, especially when it comes to recreation areas. I just wonder if that would be an iconic feature that could get me behind. I think what I've seen from especially the comments posts, or, you know, the surveys and things that are done, you're getting too many cooks in the kitchen, and that's probably a metaphor that Julie would like, but I think it's one of those things that you just get too many people's opinion, how are you ever going to truly have consensus?
Yes, and I'd like to add that without having a complete package to present either to the steering committee, or to the public, or to both, we're right back to square one again, saying, using assumptions, it's going to be too expensive, where we won't be able to get the money. The $59,000 that we're putting out for the consultant is going to include the consultant giving us sources, or steering us towards sources-- uh, giving us sources or steering us towards sources to help us fund this.
Isn't that something we should be able to determine before having to pay fifty-nine thousand dollars to have someone tell us there are grants available? Here's here's another.
Well, they're designing it too as well, Pete, if not just for finding the fun, the design work.
Why would you, why would we design something that we don't even know we can afford?
That's not design work.
Because we don't know how much it's going to cost unless we design it first.
That's not design work. That that includes no design. That's a conceptual, but basically, it's a conceptual, find your funding and get a preliminary cost estimate of what it would take. That's all you're going to get. I mean, not that that's not important, but that's all you're getting. You're going to be spending another million bucks or whatever if it's a ten million dollar project to design.
But it's coming up. I mean, it's design and concept, or design and engineering.
Design and engineering services.
Not for fifty-nine grand, you're not gonna. And Matt's acknowledging that. He's he's, it's a conceptual deal-only guy. I mean, I'm not saying that's a bad deal. I'm just telling you that you're not getting what you think you're getting if you think you're getting design.
Right. I I'm not saying that it's going to be detailed down to the construction design, but we don't know what it's going to cost unless we get a concept of a design.
Right. Yeah, that's what you're, that's what you're going to.
We're still operating under assumptions.
Yep. This is Matt. Again, the mayor is correct. This is just a concept. This would determine what permitting would be needed. This would start the conversation with the city of South Sioux City. It would determine, uh, what funding parameters are available, um, and real- and working with the steering committee and the park board, uh, on the on the whole process.
See, and and I I wish I could speak, uh, with more authority on the topic. I I don't know what the cost of a pedestrian bridge across the Missouri would be. I'm guessing multi-million dollar expense. But at the same time, if, look how, Alex, you you mentioned the nu- the number of years we've been working on the riverfront, uh, development project. Uh, you're absolutely correct. Uh, projects that are expensive like this take long periods of time. Uh, we we talked about an aquatic center since I've been on council, and we've never gotten very far on that simply because the estimated cost was, I know, over ten million dollars. And what worries me is I think the Parks and Recreation Department, in particular, and the amenities that are now available in the city have been, you know, it's been a great four or five-year run. And and I don't want to see competition for them with continuing to build upon our successes in in the community and and have to just continue to save and and wait five or six years or more for something we don't even know if we can afford.
The Bob Carey Bridge costs twenty-two million dollars, and will be about a little over, you won't be a third, but you'll be, yeah, about half, and that was dollars back in two thousand sixteen.
Oh, wow.
So you're looking at ten or eleven million bucks. You won't be have to be as high either, but because you don't have navigation up that far.
And as an example, too, that was almost exclusively federally funded, or was it federal dollars, right?
Eighteen million.
Yeah.
Well, Matt, can we do that? Do we have the capability of doing the funding sources internally?
We've identified.
But not if you don't have a dollar.
We've identified fund, but some.
We don't know how many dollars we need.
We've identified some, but, um, we need multiple fun- funding sources, so we need to see what other programs are out there. We know enough to start those conversations.
Can you do that without having a dollar amount?
What's that?
Can you find out what other funding sources there are without having, uh, a dollar amount, an estimate?
Yes, we can. We can start there if needed.
Well, and I guess we just need to ask ourselves, Pete and Dan, you know, are you more comfortable spending this? And if if Matt comes back to you with a list of ten grants or ten revenue streams, does that change your mind? You know what I mean? If he comes back next week with a list and says, here are ten grants, you know, five federal, four federal or something, and the rest state or local, you know, is that going to push you you over the edge? That you're like, okay, yeah, let's design and know what we're working with?
Well, I think, Alex, that's a good question. I I think I'm leaning the other way, by the way, but but we don't lose that much time by having those funding sources available. I think Pete's raising a good question that could be answered within a relatively short period of time. I don't, I know we don't meet a week from today because of Memorial Day, but we are meeting June first and and each Monday in in June. So if it doesn't, you know, if we don't put a lot of time behind us to come up with those, I I think it would probably be, it'd be a good decision to gather that information first.
This is Matt. I would ask that the item be deferred till the second meeting in June, and then we can work on getting a list of potential funding sources for the council.
So June eighth?
Yes.
I'll move I'll move that, Mayor, if it's appropriate to move to table till June Sat- or June eighth.
There's a second.
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Shaner?
No.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
No.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Twenty-one is a resolution authorizing Parks and Rec to submit a grant application to the Walmart Foundation for Outdoor Fitness Equipment for the Chris Larson Park River Development Project. I'll move it.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Twenty-two is a resolution awarding a purchase order to ExoFit Outdoor Fitness for outdoor fitness equipment for the Chris Larson Park Riverfront Development Project. I'll move it.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Twenty-three is a resolution approving a contract to ABC Abatement Company for the asbestos abatement at nine oh nine Jackson Street. We get everything done on this?
Uh, yes. Councilman Moore had a couple of questions. Uh, the entity is a Nebraska domestic corporation. We updated the contract to reflect that. Uh, there was an existing Iowa law provision in the contract, but we struck that, and we added another article for jurisdiction and venue to be in Woodbury County District Court. And that was executed, uh, by the contractor today, um, and everything should be ready to go.
That.
Second. Thanks, Nicole, for doing that.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Any citizen concerns? Council concerns? Pete?
I would like to make a little statement if I could, please. Uh, today, I just want to follow up on a post that I put on my Facebook page. And what I mentioned was I took a few moments today to follow up on the Sioux Land Recovery Fund. And this fund is, uh, managed by United Way of Sioux Land, and it provides financial resources that help meet the many needs for recovery in our Sioux Land area for, uh, one major disaster strike. Our major disaster, of course, is the COVID nineteen, and our disaster officially struck us on March nineteenth. Um, that's when this fund was activated, and I just want to thank United Way for managing this fund and to seeing that so many worthwhile entities that are reaching out, um, from churches to food banks to food pantries, um, to just tons of good, strong public assistance, um, homeless shelters, Boys and Girls Club, there's so many to mention. But it meets the direct assistance needs, um, for Sioux Land. And I want to say a personal thank you, um, for all the hard work, uh, that goes into managing that and to the entities who are, you know, servicing Sioux Land for that.
Okay.
You can go to United Way's website if you'd like to learn more about who's receiving the grant and also if you'd like to make a donation to it.
We have a citizen that phoned in that we'll take next. Yep.
Good afternoon. You are on live with the city council. If you could state your name and address for the record?
Uh, Michael Brennigan, fourteen twenty-three West Fourth Street.
All right.
This is Iowa.
Thank you. Uh, please proceed. The council can hear you.
Okay. Um, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, my, uh, concern was, uh, you just, uh, wanted to know if there was any plans on putting, uh, sidewalk for pedestrian safety on Hamilton Boulevard to the Chris Larson Park.
I don't know the answer to that. We'll have to get you an answer.
What what was the question, Mayor, or someone can?
Plans to put a Hamilton on Hamilton Boulevard down to Chris Larson Park? And I don't know, I thought there was sidewalks under that new bridge, but maybe there isn't. I guess I haven't.
There is no sidewalks from Triview, um, down to the park, and, uh, you kind of have to walk on the shoulder to get the the entrance.
Okay, well, let's get your phone number, and we'll try to get you an answer, okay? You got his phone number?
Yes.
Okay, we'll try to get you. We'll have the Parks Director call you, okay? Okay?
Mr. Brennigan, were you able to hear the mayor? We, uh, will have someone contact you with the telephone number that you provided to the city clerk.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pete, do you have anything?
No, I do not, Mayor. Thank you.
Dan?
Uh, just everyone have a safe Memorial Day weekend, next weekend, Memorial Day being on Monday. Please stay safe.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Dan.
Yep, you're welcome.
You too.
Thank you.
Alex?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of things, and, uh, bear with me, I have a fire alarm going off right now. Apparently, my mom's cooking something great. Oh, there, it went off. It went off. We're, we might be ordering from Soho.
I hope you're okay.
Yeah, no, we're good. Um, I just wanted to say a couple of things. Number one, I would really ask our, um, our citizens, our citizens of Sioux Land just to practice some patience, um, as businesses start opening, um, as they feel comfortable, and, um, if they're requiring masks or whatever safety protocols and, uh, procedures that they're implementing. I would ask that you just practice patience and good character. I've heard of numerous times now where individuals are going into businesses that require masks or are trying to do so to keep their staff safe and have been verbally assaulted. Um, I just, I don't think there's any any need for that in our community, and we need to, um, practice better judgment, that a lot of these employers see that, that they're trying to just protect their employees and make sure that they're not getting sick. So, um, please respect those businesses, um, and and practice some patience as we all go through this reopening process. Um, and then the other thing that I would just mention, we did have some exciting news, um, for Sioux City. I think it's pretty exciting that NAI basketball, uh, was extended an additional year, so we'll be hosting that championship through twenty twenty-five, as well as NAI volleyball, um, which is being expanded through twenty twenty-four. And so, and so I'm really excited about, um, those two extensions, both the volleyball as well as basketball. Um, and then finally, too, the Courtyard by Marriott Hotel opened up. Um, I'm sure it was a a lot less, uh, of an exciting opening than they were hoping for, but, um, I'm looking forward to getting back to business and seeing, uh, continued development of our downtown. That's all I have here.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Hey, Bob, our church bought a fogger. I I would like you to look into one of those. Just if we could afford one, they must not be terribly expensive, but they're a machine fogger.
I think we have two or three on order already.
Okay, good, because I, it appears that they work, and within ten seconds, your your room's ready to go again. So I think we need that for here and for the convention center, and maybe even for the Tyson, for to look at that. Then, uh, I have a little deal to read. The city of Sioux City will continue to monitor the impact of COVID nineteen in our community and do what we can to protect our citizens. We'll follow guidelines established by the state of Iowa and open our public facilities when we feel it is appropriate time for for our city. At this time, city facilities will remain closed until further notice. Normally, we would open the swimming pools in time for the Memorial Day weekend. However, we're unable to open them at this time. The governor's proclamation prohibits all swimming pools from opening until at least May twenty-seventh. In addition, we follow the Center for Disease Control guidelines and may not be open, be able to open the swimming pools at all this summer. We're currently assessing the ability to offer limited service of the pool, which I don't think would be right under these circumstances, but the staff is still looking at swimming lessons and other small private group activities, which can meet the CDC guidelines. We we hope to have an announcement soon. Thank you for understanding. With that, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Everybody has their holiday here.